Hey guys, what's happening? It is the end of May 2025. Thanks for tuning into American Dawn. The next episode, and this one's going to be on school districts. What is happening in some of the school districts? So with me, I have Dr. Kelly Coles. You guys have seen her before we talked. Appreciate you coming back.
Absolutely. My, my pleasure.
Always, always. And we have Olivia Krollcheck.
Hello.
Olivia's back, right?
I am.
UC student. We talked about this before, right? They tried to fail her for saying she's a biological female. She is. So we're here to talk about, I've had a lot of people reach out to me recently, school boards. So we watch these school boards and we're watching people still pushing DEI. They're still pushing diversity, equity, inclusion. It used to be DIE, but they changed it because it's.
No, it's always been DEI, but we just like to make fun of it by calling it DIE.
Exactly, exactly. So Kelly, I want to get both your opinions, and that's the whole idea of this podcast. How do we, I'm not going to use the word fight back because that just sounds odd, but how do we call it out? How do we stop and go, hey, I'm watching this happen? Did he just say that? Did he just cuss in a meeting? Or did he just come up and say the girls should be in the boys locker rooms? Or did he just come up and the books? I mean, and I've seen videos where people took these books that they went for first, second, third, fourth grade, and they read them in a school room and he said, stop, please don't talk like that in a school board meeting. But they allow it in the library that the kids can read it. How do we fight back?
Yeah, I think that's a perfectly good question because my husband and I were sitting still watching things happen when we had our five kids in the school district in Springboro. And we were thinking, why is that happening? What is going on? What is changing? And we didn't know what to do. So I have, once I was on two school boards, I kind of learned what influences school boards. And what influences school boards are two things, headlines and litigation. So the, the best thing you can do if you want to make a change on your school district and what they're doing, what they're exposing children to, it's abuse. Call it abuse. Call it shameful. Call it what you want to call it. Don't let them use school speak and give you the language that you're supposed to use. It's not their language, it's yours. Go there to the school board meeting. That's helpful. Write letters, but also start a Facebook page that has your school district's name exposed. And that's where you start posting stuff that you're seeing your children and any other child, doesn't have to be your child, but children are exposed to. Children are hearing, children are seeing. The poor academic records, which you could find on your state school board or state department of education websites. You can call them up while you're on their website and say, hey, I'm looking for my district's report card. How can I get to that? Because it's not easy to find. But they will navigate you through their website and you will find the report card. And then you can also call them back later and say, okay, what does this mean when I click on more data? There's a little description, but I don't quite understand that. And again, they'll explain it to you. If you still don't understand it, call me because I would love to explain to you what that means. I would love to explain to you, it's actually on my website, it's a free tutorial on how to find district details. And then I explain right on that tutorial what that district detail means. And it's not necessarily what the school district describes it as meaning. It's usually some pretty bad news. Most school districts, it's not good news. We have in Ohio, set the standards so low, the bar for acceptable calling what we call proficient is so low, most parents would be appalled. But once you know this information, your job is to share it with your friends, neighbors and families that have people in that district and maybe across the state and maybe across the country. Because they need to understand the system's broken. It's terminally ill and we must fix it.
I've said this before, and for me, it's, it's, it's because a lot of people like something's weird. Something just doesn't pass the smell test. I say that all the time. If it doesn't pass your smell test, your intuition is correct. Your actually, your gut, it's your, it's your gut, your gut check, right? Your god check. God speaking to you out loud and going, something's wrong here. And that's when I stopped to start paying attention. And this happened a lot during COVID. When COVID and they told me I couldn't pay attention to my daughter's classroom. And I was like, yes, I can.
Well, timeout, timeout. What? You have to as a parent say, that makes no sense. If my children aren't exposed to it, I must see it first.
Hundred percent.
That's my requirement. I must see it before my child will see it.
Yep. Yes. I know. I agree. And Olivia, I know that your walk has been, I just, I buy hats off. For a 22 year old to be able to step up like you're stepping up and it's appointed by God. God is in the middle of that and the strength you're getting. And I think it's awesome. So you go out and you speak out against school boards and you go out and see these things that are taking place. What's your opinion?
Oh goodness. Well, I think DEI discriminates by design. It's division, exclusion and intolerance. That's really what DEI.
Division, exclusion.
I think going through, you know, high school, I started paying more attention to, you know, what happened during COVID and exactly like what you said, the parents weren't being told what people were learning. They weren't learning anything. I know that myself. My dad has a story he likes to tell to people. I came home one day early from work and Olivia was sitting at the kitchen counter in her chemistry class online with the camera turned off, watching Criminal Minds in Spanish and playing guitar all this, all at the same time. That's what I.
Bastard.
I still got A's, of course.
Yeah.
We weren't learning anything. They didn't care. So what they were learning, what was being pushed is liberal agenda, DEI, division, exclusion and intolerance. And we're seeing that only snowball now. And going to different school boards and going across the country, speaking at college campuses, I see those firsthand. I experienced it firsthand at University of Cincinnati, being forced as a chemistry major to take a diversity course, women's gender studies. But my options were LGBTQ activism, queer studies and women's gender studies. So I chose that thinking women's gender studies can't be that bad. Spoiler, it was.
Wrong.
And was failed for saying the basics that men don't belong in women's sports. That's an exact, you know, description of DEI at work. You know, failing students for having opinions, not even opinions, just facts and pointing that out. But I think going off what you said, getting involved is the easiest thing anyone can do. I get involved even maybe when I shouldn't. I have to show up at school board meetings, like some local ones. But I show up to these school board meetings when I hear that something's going on. Like Forest Hill School District, Jason Simmons was on video saying that the boys can go in the girls bathrooms, the locker rooms or sports. They're young enough. It doesn't matter. He has a daughter. That's crazy. No girl at any age, especially in middle school, should be subject to boys going in her locker room at such a vulnerable time and undressing in front of her. And then I have to go to a school board and call that out. Where, what are all the parents doing?
That's the scary spot. And I'll, I'll let you continue that, but I have to throw this in. Parents, please, I'm begging you, get involved, get involved. These are the people that take care of you when you're in a nursing home. These are the people that take care of you when you're going into the court and they're the judges. These are people that are the doctors that are going to go, this is our next generation. This is what's coming up to help out with our leadership and we're letting it be tainted. We're letting the indoctrination take place. We're allowing them to push the boys and the girls in the locker rooms. And you've seen that across the country as you speak.
My best friends have had to compete against men. Riley, Riley Gaines, she was one of the first big voices to speak out against men competing in women's sports.
Good job, Riley. Way to keep talking, keep rocking, Riley.
In the swimming locker room, which is not a place of modesty, to say the least. I know that as a runner, it was not a place of modesty either.
Sure.
Had to undress fully, completely in front of a six foot four, fully intact biological male. Imagine the feeling and all those fathers who just let him walk in there. All of the coaches, the faculty members who allowed that to happen.
Right.
And the entire team.
Shame, shame, shame on them.
Exactly.
I can't imagine my husband would have allowed that.
Yeah.
Who said you're not going in there. Dads, stand up. I almost wore my Moms for America t-shirt today because we're, we're partners with Moms for America. And moms are standing up in big numbers. But I'm now witnessing a lot of dads forming coalitions and saying, no, I stand for truth. I stand for my child. You will not abuse my child anymore. I'm done.
And we need that. I think an important part that kind of led to this, I mean, there's a lot of factors, but weak men lead to hard times. And we've heard that time and time again. And we are, we're in those hard times right now. Hopefully it'll create strong men, but seeing these dads start to come out and say something. We need, I hate to go back to this all the time, but I like to say that we need to revert to traditional values and have masculine roles and feminine roles. I think moving away from that kind of led to all this.
To clear family.
Yeah, exactly. That's so important. People don't understand that.
I, I so agree. And I'm glad someone your age is saying that.
Yeah.
My kids are from 27 to 33.
Yeah.
And they're saying that, they're seeing that. My husband saw it at least, I'd say 10 to 15 years ago. He said, Kelly, why are all these sitcoms making all the men look stupid? And I thought, I didn't notice that. I thought they were just being funny, but it was true. Many of the sitcoms were degrading the male role model. And the women, I said, well, the women don't look too bright either, but it's to be funny. But he was right. Once I started watching, I thought, oh my gosh, there's an intent here.
Well, and that intent, what I think is, you know, pushing women to kind of fulfill that masculine role. They've been pushed into the career field and all that. You know what it makes it easier to do? To indoctrinate your children because you're sending them to daycare, you're sending them to childcare, to schools. You're not raising young kids, the government is. So you have no say in what they're learning in schools. And that's why we're seeing an increase of DEI, transgenderism, all of this.
And with the divorce rate so high, you break up these families and then you're getting that single mom. And then she's trying to handle it all and she's tired. I mean, who wouldn't be? You're working all day, then you come home, you gotta be a single mom, take care of the parents, going through every, and then, and we are. We're lacking the masculine role. And I know they talk about that a lot with the African American communities. We're seeing it with white. Yeah, everybody's going through this now. And we're seeing a very breakdown of the family. And I'm not gonna lie to you, I was afraid to do things because my father was in the home and he's passed on and God rest his soul. But he was, let me call your father, please don't call my dad. I'll behave. I'm so sorry. And that mattered a lot. So we're watching this with the school boards and I know there's people like, can I file an injunction? Can I go in there and, and, you know, really tell them, stop doing this right now? A lot of people are afraid of cancel culture. You see these people, as soon as they speak out, they go after their jobs, they go after their social stature. We're going to remove you as a coach. We're going to accuse you of pedophilia. We're going to accuse you of drug dealing. We're going to accuse you of, oh my God, Don, Don's a racist, Don's a racist.
So culture only works if you let it.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
Take the power away. I like that.
And I, I just say, bring it, bring it. You got nothing. I have the one and only boss.
Come on.
Yeah, I have the one and only. So you don't compare to him. I'm going to keep doing what I'm told to do, what I'm geared to do, what I'm wired to do because he gives me that strength. So you can call me lots of things and I'm going to laugh. I'm going to dismiss your comments as laughable, juvenile, and let you go ahead and say them. Because in this country, by gosh, we have freedom to speak. You go right ahead. But I have the freedom to not let, not let it affect me and it will not. So call us whatever you want. I've been called all of those.
Oh, yes.
A big t-shirt, but it's not big enough to hold all the titles you're giving me.
See the patches like NASCAR driver. I've been called this and this and this. And I'm still standing here loving you. I'm still standing here as your brother and your sister trying to help you. Yeah.
That's why a lot of people ask me like, why do you do this? Why do you keep putting yourself in the position to be called these names and all that? I, I didn't put myself in this position. It, it happened. It was God's calling for me. I wanted to be a neurosurgeon. That's the path I was on. I was getting into grad school.
You still can.
I can, but I don't want to. At least not right now. That's not, that's not like what's meant for me because obviously these issues are very prevalent, especially local to me, which is sad. So I have a lot more work to do.
But imagine if the U heads were coming to that and said, hey, I'm not, I'm not going to speak. I'm afraid of cancel culture. Imagine if Riley Gaines wasn't out there, Charlie Kirk wasn't out there. You know, I mean, Dr. Kelly Coles wasn't out there, American Dawn wasn't out there. What would we, where would we be? Because a lot of people don't know what's happening. And later they go, you were right. I'm like, a lot of people helped me. A lot of people had showed me which way to look, what rock to overturn. Evil happens when good men do nothing. Well, I say evil happens when good people do nothing.
And people need to give us grace when we are wrong.
Yeah, absolutely.
But we're, we're going down the path that, that is righteous, that is saving our children. That's my goal in life is that these children don't deserve what's coming their direction. They don't deserve it. And I'm going to stand between tyranny and the freedom our children should have. I'm going to always stand there. The rest of you adults, you manage yourselves. I'm going to stand in front of the children and not let you abuse them.
I love the movie Braveheart. We're in a Braveheart moment. We're in a Braveheart moment. We got, there's a level where we have to, and peacefully, peacefully, not violence. And what's happened recently in Cincinnati, oh my gosh, that's insane. We don't turn to violence. But we're going to show up and we're going to peacefully protest. We're going to peacefully talk back toward what's happening. Speak our mind, making sure that, hey, that's wrong. Because there is, and I keep saying sniff test. Elaborate on that. You, you use that too.
Well, when I was on the school board and I was new to this whole world, I'm just, you know, pharmaceutical scientist. I was just a scientist. I wasn't used to the narrative. I wasn't used to the messaging, the tactics of the left. I had no idea what I was in for. I learned pretty quickly. It was a very steep learning curve that, that I saw the face of evil for the first time. And I prayed more during that four years than I'd ever prayed, thinking, what do I do? What's going on here? This is a bizarre place for me to be. And my children and my husband were witnessing that. And I had some health issues that popped up and we thought, well, it's got to be related to this.
Strut, those amazing things.
But there were things that were being said to us on the school board and I thought, that doesn't sound right. That doesn't correlate with what I know over here. And I'm going to go home and do my homework and I'm going to come back. And, and my job was to get the other four board members to vote with me, or at least two others. Because then you have more majority at least. And so I would come back and I would give them the information that I had found that wasn't a match to what we were just told. And you know what? These were people who never agreed with me. We were a four one board on most things. I was the one, but they started saying, huh, all right. Why did you not tell us the rest of the information? They started getting mad at administration for skewing the information. For not giving them the rest of the information. Then they finally learned that darn it, Cole's going to go do the homework. So we better tell the truth. And I'm not sure they ever really did. I mean, I had so many things said to me that were just not true. And I thought, why, why are we in this place where they're so protective of their information? They're so geared and practiced at manipulating their bosses with information. This is bizarre because I never imagined that was true. Much of it didn't pass my smell test. And that's the reason I went somewhere else and said, guys, I guess you don't know, but I'm a researcher. I'm going to go find what I need to find. So that's what I trained school board members to do. Go find the rest of the information, either financial or hire somebody to do it. But you gotta convince the other board members that this is a good expense or use of district money. But it was a bizarre place to be. And I wanted to talk about Forest Hills. Because I think hundreds of thousands of people now have seen that video. And tonight I'm going to record a podcast. It's, it's not live. We're going to send it out afterwards, but it's on, don't quit. We're telling our board members, don't quit. Because you find yourself in this place where you're being bludgeoned for something you said or something you are conveying from the community. It's not even your beliefs. You are, you are the vessel that brings information from your community to your school board, to your administration. And here's what you got to do with the students in your school because the community is telling you to do this. But we're, we're finding that good school board members who aren't prepared to handle the battle that they're really up against, they just quit. They just say, there's no way. I'm getting $125 for me, per meeting. I can barely take my family out to dinner for that. Why would I do this? True. But we're saying you're there for a reason. Somebody sent you there. Somebody has guided you there. You're there for a reason. Don't quit. So what we're going to talk to each other tonight about, it's Corey Ford, who's my assistant director. And he knows because he's been through the teacher licensure college. So he knows all about what they do. Their actual names and titles and training that these left wing radicals go through on how to bully you. And the media is right there with them. The teachers union thugs right there with them. And the lawyers, legal counsel for the district are right there with them. Bullies, a school board member that steps out of the rigid box that they have built for them. And I experienced that. I was sued in federal court. I had unfair labor practice, everything they could throw at me. But I stayed there. It was through prayer. But Forest Hills, let's talk about that.
Let me break, let me, let's go on that real quick. Let's finish that thought. I want to unbox that thought a little further. There's a video called, right? Oh, am I taking yours under?
No, go ahead.
There's a video called the wrap up smear. Take a look. Enter that in. These are the tools they use. There's a book called Rules for Radicals by Saul Alinsky. And they talk about how to get into a system and everybody send emails and everybody pressure, pressure, pressure. And that's what happened. That happened at Forest Hills. These are friends of mine. You're a friend of mine. You know you're a friend of mine and I love you guys. But you got bullied. You got knocked out. You got knocked out on the wrap up smear. You got knocked out on, you used an acronym. What was that called?
Everything, the DARBO effect.
The DARBO, what is DARBO?
Struggle sessions. I'm going to go through all of them in the tonight's video.
Awesome.
So they bring people back to a private room, executive session is what we call it in Ohio, or closed session. And they just start bullying the board member. Everybody says that was disgusting. That was, I got plenty of that. But I, I found a statute in Ohio that says you may not hold executive session to reprimand a publicly elected official. So I did read that and I said, I'm not going to be found complicit in violating Ohio law. So either we get to the legal reason we're here, or I'm going to have to go out and tell the reporter that we're holding an illegal executive session. They never bothered me again. If, if we.
But you called them out. Why they're allowed to do it.
For what's going to come their way.
Yeah.
I think they're better able and better equipped to handle and manage what's going to happen to them. In the struggle session, you just say, guys, stop. Let's get back out to the meeting and let's talk about what helps children learn. But we're talking about Forest Hills meeting the other night. So there was a meeting and one of the board members spoke out and said, I don't know what your problem is. These books are fine. And they weren't. They absolutely weren't by anybody's judgment. But then he dropped the F-bomb in his, you know, description or his discussion. And I think, you know, board members, I'm telling lots of you, don't quit. That one should quit. That one should resign. You just need to go. You're not prepared. You can't do that.
Vote it out.
Yeah, there's, there's no way to really get him off, but for him to be publicly humiliated because he should be.
I think if they check his box tops, he'll be removed very quickly.
Well, very possible, but nobody will do that. I mean, that just won't happen. I wish, I wish, but definitely.
He was talking about.
His content.
It's the content of what he was talking about. He was pushing it so hard, he had to cuss.
And it tells me he doesn't have filters in lots of areas. That's what you're getting at.
Well, going back to multiple things that this guy has said, hesitate, I think, guy. But at this point, he said that it's okay for the guys to go into the girls bathrooms, the locker rooms.
No, it's not.
At any age.
No, it's not. I'm a father. No, it's not.
Eight through 12. Can you imagine your daughter having to change in front of, I don't know, say a 17 year old walks in there? Oh, that's okay? It's not saying that these books and I, I went through and I read these books. I went through these to, you know, to do my research before I made a video about it. I wasn't even comfortable saying some of the quotes on my social media. If I wasn't comfortable saying it, then maybe fourth graders shouldn't be reading it. Maybe sixth graders shouldn't be reading it. And we have, we need to have a double standard here. We have TV shows, we have movies, we have video games that have restrictions. They have, you know, they have ratings to protect children from mature materials. Why don't we have that same standard in our school libraries? And why is it such an outrage to him that we want to protect children?
It's not, and we're not trying to ban books. Everybody keeps throwing that out there. There's no banning of books. It's rating of books. Because I'll be honest with you, I'm not going to let my five year old learn what my 15 year olds learn. I'm not going to let that, you're challenging their, their growth curve. You're challenging, you're implementing things that they're not ready for. And I'm the same way with softball. Like I, I'm a softball coach. I'm not going to teach you the entire matrix system of how to hit till I teach you how to use a tee first. And I teach you how to step and step and right. There's a step procedure to life. Just like being a doctor. You don't do surgery on your first, as a freshman in college, right? You have to get to that level and same with the rating system.
Yeah. It's just another way for them to indoctrinate these kids. I mean, we're seeing across the country, drag queen story hour. That's another way they're.
With little kids.
With little kids, elementary schools.
Yeah.
Across the nation, not just in Ohio, but so many different states. They're bringing in people to teach about queer studies at elementary grade level. I didn't even know that was a thing until probably like high school. Because we shouldn't be learning that from the school, first of all. We should be learning from our parents.
What excuses are they giving as to why they're doing this? So that you know everything, so we're, we're going to teach all the bad things to the first grader? Is that the idea?
Exactly. The guise of inclusivity, allowing mandatory, you know, participation trophies or scholarships or whatever from women. Inclusivity, always, every single time, that's the goal.
But it's wrong. It's just plain and simple wrong that, that you would expose children to anything. I'd say let their parents decide. The school district should spend tax dollars on things that are not disturbing, that are not pornographic, that are, that are age appropriate and developmentally appropriate, but also not pervasively vulgar. Stop. And that could be like war stories even. Let's keep it on a really neutral level that, that war is bad, but let's not get so graphic. It disturbs children. It really does. We have lots of child psychologists telling us that.
Yes, yeah.
They're doing testimonies now just saying how disturbing it is. And we have, we've talked about this before. We have a quadrupling the rate of suicide in our teenagers. Why? Because we've allowed disturbing.
They're overwhelmed.
Stuff in our curriculum, not math, reading and science rigor, but disturbing, rigorous disturbing stuff. That, that has to go. Let the parents decide if I want to expose my child to, let's say, even a G rated. We should keep everything in our schools G rated. Some of these novels have to go. I've, I've never really been a fan of Lord of the Flies, you know, and some of those because it was graphic and it was disturbing. As a teenager to read that. I'm not even sure that one belongs. If it were my school, I'd choose different books. Because you can make your book, your point, give them some pretty great classical novels to read and teach them to read and love reading. It doesn't take this graphic bad stuff that disturbs them. They can't learn. They know that. They cannot learn when their brain is so wrapped around what they just read. It's days, weeks, maybe months before they can actually put that off into the card catalog, the file cabinet, and come back to focus on the content of what you're teaching.
And the one thing that I see for me is where's the proof in the pudding?
Yeah, there's no proof.
The proficiencies are dropping. We're not even paying attention to the fact that we can't, eighth graders can't read at an eighth grade level now. We can't do math. China's four years apart. Their fourth grader is our eighth grader now. We are slowly slipping further and further because we're focusing on all the things that aren't related to making a kid better at math. Making a kid a better reader, basic science. I mean, have you seen it when you were in school? And there's people like, you're not ready for college. What are you doing here?
Absolutely. I mean, there's some people who couldn't even read out loud in class. And I'm like, what are you, what are you doing? And then, yeah, no, honestly, I'm shocked. I'm appalled what people are learning in college. The class options.
Yeah.
I think going through the course catalog, seeing what the options are for learning. I mean, once again, going back to the diversity courses, LGBTQ activism, queer studies, what are you learning?
Right.
That class, how to be offended, what different pronouns you can be for the day.
Right.
What's that going to help you with? A career that you're not going to make any money in? Starbucks barista? Like that's the highest job you can get with that kind of major. So we're not actually equipping these kids to succeed in life at all.
Correct. And it, and that, that worries me now. We have conspiracy theorists about what they think this is or what they're trying to do. In the meantime, they're doing it because we're not speaking up and we're not showing up at the school board meetings. In the meantime, they are, the kids are just trapped and confused. So I know that I, I recently attended an event where the speaker was speaking about truancy. We have a huge rate of kids that don't even want to go to school, right? Have you seen it?
Right. And there's a, there's a training seminar from AEI, I believe that's who it is. I just registered for it, but that was the topic of their talk. And really, I've been the only one really talking about why children don't want to come to school. This chronic truancy rate is up to 30, 30 to 40% of our students don't want to go to school anymore. So this disturbing content is disturbing them. So they don't want to go to school. Even they're no interest in learning math, reading and science because they're afraid of to, to go in the classroom. One, they're going to be ostracized for not using the right pronoun or not choosing a pronoun or not identifying as somebody who doesn't, you know, identify the sex they want to be with.
I mean, I think about my own experience. I couldn't even step foot back on my college campus once my story went like national.
People picking and bullying on you?
I mean, you couldn't walk on my campus without getting, you know, yelled at or called a name or something. I've been called every name in the book.
But why is that? Because you said you're a biological female. So think about that. That's a passive smell test.
But does that make it acceptable for someone to say, I'm going to be the next Lake and Riley? Or show up to my house and say they're going to kill me or say they're outside of my window or pulled me hostage. I was held hostage by 250 people. We're talking about eliminating DEI. We're talking about the protection of our free speech, which is the foundation of our country, by the way. And talking about the protection that women deserve in sports and there's, you know, single sex spaces. Does it really mean that I should be getting all of that? It's crazy that we've reached that point. But that's why students are so afraid to A, go to school, B, say anything. But also another point totally like branching off of that. I think social media is another huge contributor to the idea that people don't want to go to school. I mean, TikTok, the attention span, going on there for hours and hours a day. In COVID, we had, obviously everyone was at home. No one was actually learning on exhibit A. But students were on TikTok. We saw a rise of it hours and hours a day. What's pushed on TikTok? Not conservative views. I've been banned seven times on that app for saying just the truth.
Lovely.
Seven times. I'm on my eighth account. It's still going strong. But what's being pushed? Liberal ideas, different pronouns, or you need to be part of this, otherwise, you know, we don't like you. All of that is being pushed. And I think the kids don't even want to go to school because they want to be on social media. But my mom is a teacher before she left the school district. In her last year, every single year, they asked students what they want to be when they grow up. Half of the kids answered a YouTuber, an influencer.
Which really is.
What is that?
Yeah.
What does it mean? I want to run a nonprofit because they have demonized anybody that makes a profit. Private industry, you know, they've, they've demonized corporations.
Yeah.
So much so that everybody says, I want to be in a nonprofit, nonprofit. I'm, I'm, why?
Yeah.
Why wouldn't you want to make a profit? Because those people in nonprofits still make plenty of money.
They probably make more money than.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not about you working for free, not a volunteer, in any, either one, but why not make a profit? And so I know that the system has made them feel so bad for having the desire to achieve. So they're thinking, well, if I'm not going there to learn how to achieve, why am I going? Because I'm just going to be made to feel bad.
Yeah. Well, they're going to teach you how to be victimized and oppressed and stuff.
There you go.
And be ashamed of your skin color.
There you go. Shame, it's white, white shame is what I.
How, yeah. How, how that's not considered racist?
It is.
How that's not considered, I mean.
Abuse.
You're trying to tell me I'm bad because I'm white. And we're trying to reverse all these roles. I've never said anybody's bad because of a skin color. So why would I be a racist? Like, how does that fit into this narrative? So they're empty threats. You said that earlier when we were talking. He's, yeah.
It's the time.
For the most part. Well, because when it really comes through, it's a big deal, right? They're using it as a threat.
Yeah.
Which almost should be a crime in itself. That's just my personal opinion. I can't make things up about you. I can't.
It's a crime at a tough point.
Yeah. It's, there used to be a character assassination law and you could file charges. And now they took that away, like that went away. Right? How much do you get hit? Or you're like, really?
I get hit all the time.
Sabotage my life.
Columbus just did a big whole week of, of beating, beating up my organization. I think that's, that's funny. Because they couldn't even spell southwestern, the name of the school district correctly. My gosh. And then they, somebody didn't do their homework. So my organization is the NSBLC. And they hurried up and looked it up and saw it was the National Standards-Based Learning Coalition, something like that, I think.
But they were trying to confuse me. They wanted to not remember your name.
It was totally unintentional. It was uneducated people.
They are uneducated people.
Just today, I had an email from SBCA, you know, they're fairly liberal organizations. But the Warren County SBCA, and she says, we don't, sorry, we're full. I mean, there were three sentences all meshed into one. There was no commas, no nothing. It made no sense because it was missing a lot of words in between. And I thought, okay, she's used to texting. She's probably a young person. And I wrote back and I said, yay, yeah, that's good information. But next time, can you put it into a readable sentence?
Like you took English class.
She wrote back and she just said, we don't take bully dogs, B-U-L-L-I-E. So I had to write back and say, well, it's spelled B-U-L-L-I-E.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
I, I think that's.
You think that's a bot?
That's what I'm wondering. AI bots are really not educated either, but neither, neither are our young people. Sorry.
And while all this crisis is going on in our schools and we're, we're all just solely distracted from the three Rs, right? Reading, writing, arithmetic. While we're going down all this, here comes AI.
Yeah.
And AI's. AI's bad. Pour water on it.
AI's.
It'll shrink like a witch does.
We need it to.
Right?
Oh, it's terrible.
Yeah.
So we don't have journalists anymore. We have AI bots.
Oh, yeah.
And those are all from China.
Yeah.
China's running our AI bots. So I believe they're the ones writing the smash articles, smash NFBLC and beat up because they can't spell. And when they interpret, they interpret, you see the wording on some of these and they're missing words and they're spelled wrong. It's hilarious.
AI videos are getting creepy now. The people, they can just make people talk. That's really, it's gonna be bad.
Yes. So I, and I know for me, like my, my grandchildren, I, I don't put their picture on the internet at all. Cause they can take things and they actually can make it where you're doing something that you're, you would never do.
Yeah.
And they could add that in. They could tell a story about whatever it may be. But it looks like that's that person. That's the power of AI.
So with what I do for like politics and stuff, I work very closely with an organization, I can name the name, but they work in the human trafficking arena. Um, and catch these people. And I'm hearing stories and stuff. They've taught me a lot about posting pictures and what you post online. A lot of times it's, you know, you post a picture of your kid and that kid is on the black market. Edited AI, doing things that are not appropriate. You cannot post pictures of your kid. Another big thing is the signs outside of houses. Congrats, Aiden graduated pre-K. Now someone knows the name of your kid. Your kindergartner, like that.
Oh, they're putting their face on her too.
It usually is a picture. You, you call that kid's name, he's gonna turn around. He's, you know, a couple of years old. So it's very dangerous.
My dad said, come pick you up. Something happened to your mom. And be careful in public. I know with all these stories that come out, they're actually taking them right there in front of you.
They're taking what?
Children at the stores. The guy will walk right by and just grab their hand and keep walking like it's normal and hopefully he walks away. And they're defining that a lot.
Ballard, that was about Tim Ballard was just incredible. And then he showed images of kids just being taken right in front of you.
We live in a scary world and we can walk through this stuff. We, we can figure this out, but we gotta stand up. We gotta stand up and we gotta, I mean, call it old school, whatever you wanna call it, pay attention to what's happening.
Yeah. And you know, I think back now and I apologize to my children because I would have never, had I known then what I know now, I would have never sent them to public schools. Yeah, I wouldn't have done that. But I, I wasn't trusting the information I was getting from the outside. I was saying, oh, it's not that bad. Uh, I don't really have time. Even though I gave up my career to stay at home and raise my own children, I should have educated my own children. Because I think they were truly held back in the public systems. I have, you know, a daughter that's an orthopedic trauma surgeon and a son that's in the Navy as a nuclear engineer short for that. And I have a, you know, ER ICU nurse. I have another doctorate of clinical pharmacy and pathology and solid, and transplanting.
Well, my parents have pushed me hard enough.
They've done well.
Right?
They've done well.
Ran into burning buildings. I'm sorry.
But I think they could have been those things at the age of fifteen.
Yeah.
I think that it slowed them down and it inserted stuff in their heads that.
I don't think it's just public schools though. I mean, I, I do a lot of caseworks. So I have people come to me with their problems. Whether it's DEI or women's sports or something. And I basically help them solve the issue, whether it's legally or just with the school. A lot of it's coming from Christian schools, like Gonzaga University. I had someone come to me, an RA, a regent, um, so whatever it's called, lives in the building and all of that. That's his job. That's how he pays his tuition is by working. He was kicked out of his position for reading the Bible during some sort of like.
Oh, wow. A resident advisor. Wow.
For reading his Bible in a Christian school.
Putting up, um, for the month of March, it was some sort of leprechaun. But then they made it like the Pride rainbow for March instead. Not just like leprechauns and all that. They turned it into a pride bulletin board in all the hallways. Christian school.
They're still pushing it. They're still coming through.
Well, OU, Ohio Northern University, where my daughter was attending.
Yes.
Uh, there was a little sibs weekend and I was headed north because I had a speaking engagement up there. And my two teenage kids said, I wanna go stay with my, my daughter who was attending there for little sibs weekend. I said, okay, well, you can have Friday night, but Saturday I'm coming to get you. And they said, oh, mom, please, when I came to pick them up, please stay for the, the drag show, the drag show. And I thought, well, this is a Christian university, little sibs weekend. It surely, it's gonna be the sororities and fraternities just being silly. I never in my head thought it would be what it was. So we stayed and we were so disgusted. I was so angry that we took and left. And I wrote the president of Ohio Northern University a letter, back then de Blasio was his name. And said, you need to fire your student activities director. You need to apologize to all parents who brought their children that weekend to little sibs weekend. And you guys owe us an explanation for what was going on at this private Christian university. And I called months later and the, the student activities director was still there. And the person that answered said, yes, we do this every year. And I said, why? Well, it's to bring, you know, awareness and tolerance. I said, it did the opposite.
What?
Did the opposite.
Right.
It was the most disgusting, disgusting wording and activities I've ever seen in my life. And I said, you recorded it. Did you show it to your board members? That's what I wanna know. Have your board members seen this recording? Cause it was on campus.
Yeah.
During little sibs weekend. All these kids were there watching.
I think I told you, I went to a small school before I transferred to UC and it was tiny. There was one walkway, basically. It was point six miles long.
One stop light.
Yeah. And so that was the one walkway you could take to get to your class. Otherwise you're off campus. During Pride week, not Pride month, whatever it was, uh, they shut down the walkway and put a closet door. And I was like, what's going on? They had like tables blocking the ways. You had to go through the door. And then they had drag queens. You had to come out of the closet if you wanted to go to your class. I left campus. I walked around, just went through the houses. I was like, I'm not doing that. But to force all of your students to come out through the closet next to a bunch of drag queens. I got in the elevator to go to my math class and was standing next to three drag queens. I'm like, what's going on?
That's, that's scary.
Why is this happening?
And, and I'll say this, if you're a drag queen, you do you. I get it. But to push that on my children, that was considered, well, I know we gotta be careful when we say certain things, right? And I'll say it out loud. To me, it's a sin. To me, you're challenging and you're trying to say I'm a man than woman, a woman's a man.
Men dressing as women is quite literally a sin. It says so in the Bible.
Yeah. Well, it does say, it does says, and we can edit through this however we wanna do that. It, it does state, they're gonna try to tell us the truth is not the truth anymore. And evil's not good and good is evil and switch, and they're trying to flip all this around. We're watching this. We were warned of this.
That's the abuse I'm talking about to these children. They have been brought up in their households and they know right from wrong. They've been told the rules right from wrong. They get into these schools where there are no such rules. Where two plus two can be five. If you wanna verbally badger somebody into submission.
Before.
There you go. I mean, they, they don't understand it. They don't understand it and it's abusing their brains and their development. So they don't wanna go. I don't blame them. But moms and dads, if your children don't wanna go to school, I'd find an alternative way to educate them. So when I was done with my four years, I had two left in the school. And I said, okay, I can no longer trust you with my children. They're coming home with me. And the superintendent said, oh, no, you don't wanna do that. Worry about their social life. I said, do not worry about their social life. I am not concerned about that at all.
Lots to go do.
There's lots, trust me.
School groups have a lot of social activities.
But there's ways to download courses from different universities. And I did mine from Liberty online. They have a hedge program and they can earn. So you can find a way to do this. Now, my daughter that was a senior begged to stay her last year and I let her, but my son came home with me. And he said, that's okay, mom. But here in Ohio and many other states, if you remove your child for some other school choice, then you still can take them to the public system for the sport or after school activity. If you don't have it in the school that you're attending. So homeschoolers would automatically be allowed in band, marching band or anything else. Football, whatever that is. So they stayed in, uh, marching band and went to that.
Nice. So we're at a spot where we're gonna start to wrap this up. And what I want each of you to do, look at my listeners. And wrap this up. Wrap it up about what your thoughts are, what we need to be doing and set some goals to what we can go do and how we can step it up. Who wants to go first?
Mostly what you're talking about is, is getting parents and community members. Don't let them tell you that you have no skin in the game in public education. Your taxes are your skin in the game. You pay state tax, local, state and federal taxes, all of which those school districts run on. So every citizen in that community has the right to stand in front of the board, to email the board, to start a Facebook page and tell everybody what's going on in that district. You have every right. Please exercise your right to save this country, make America great again, make America healthy again, and make children smart again.
How do they reach out to you? How can they reach out? If they have questions, and now I wanna talk to Kelly Coles.
Yeah. Go to nsblc.us. That's our website. There's a contact. There's also a donate. So you could donate to keep us.
Only to roll this.
Oh, boy, sure. Sure does. Yeah, I've gotta go to Colorado Springs next. Cause I go wherever my school board members need me. I will attend their board meeting. And in this case, they escorted me out of one of the meetings at Colorado Springs. So I had to sue them. And I, I will continue to do that. And so I gotta head, head there to, to court. But yes, they, they cannot stop our freedom to speak. Not yet. So exercise it while you have it, people.
I agree. Olivia Krolczak?
I, I'm gonna keep mine kinda broad. But I mean, the left is very dark. I think we've realized that. And who moves through darkness? Satan. I think the most important thing when going through this fight, a lot of people are afraid to stand up. They're afraid of the backlash. Trust me, I've heard it all. I've seen it all, everything you could think of. Um, but God equips the call. He doesn't call the equipped. So if you're feeling like you should go do something, and if you're a parent, you should. Just know that God will push you through it and you'll be just fine. Uh, all the backlash, losing your job. It's worth it if you're protecting children, one child, your child specifically. Uh, so don't be afraid to stand up, uh, trust in God.
And if somebody were to reach out, how would they get ahold of you?
On my, any of my social media, Olivia Krolczak, it's K-R-O-L-C-Z-Y-K. On X, TikTok and Instagram.
I appreciate you coming back on the show. Appreciate you being here.
Oh, pleasure.
Absolutely.
Every time. I love, it's like a cleansing. We get to tell people what we know and get them involved.
Absolutely. Guys, I wanna thank you for tuning into another American Don Show. Hey, guys, once again, thank you for tuning into the American Don Show. This is my cause. This is what the American Don Show and the crew here is about. Making sure that there's a voice, making sure that the smell test, right? I love that. And what that means is that just don't, something's not right. Something's just odd. And it's your gut check. God gave that to you. It's a conscious and you have it. It's a beautiful thing to have. There's some people out there that don't have it and we're really worried about that. And we're gonna follow up. And then wrap, as I wrap this up, I wanna make sure that we're on the same page. We haven't lost, right? We're under attack, no doubt about it. But we have abilities, we have rights, we have the chance to go and still show up at school board meetings. So let's say you say, hey, I don't wanna go to a school board meeting. Got it. They're posted online. I believe most of them are, have to be posted, YouTube, Facebook. You can go back. You can listen to it when you're in your car driving to work. You could listen to it at night if you're going on your walk. Stay in shape, right? Going on a long walk, you can listen to the school board meeting. You'll see it. It'll jump out at you and you'll know. And there are a lot of kids, and I know right now here in Cincinnati, Ohio, truancy is, it's unbelievably allowed. They're not even trying to stop it anymore. So I want you to reach out and think about your household. Where are you at? Is mom and dad both involved? Are you able to have somebody you can call and get a support line? Do you have a spiritual advisor, right? I, I have my pastor and I can call my pastor. I was with him yesterday for two hours. We talked. I wanna make sure that you know that you have resources. There are mega resources available to you. And I just wanna, if you go to a resource and you're trying to talk to somebody and it doesn't feel right, check that too. I do believe that. We gotta be careful because they provide resources on the other side of this. I think it's important that we step up and stay right with God. Make sure that you keep him with your prayers. Pray with your family. Remember, the only reason your children know God is because you taught them. Make sure you stay consistent with that. As my pastor says, keep the faucets on. Stop turning them off because Facebook will turn off your faucet, right?